I would like to call the October 12, 2023 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:01 PM. First item in the meeting location, I would like Dr. Travis Thomas to lead the standing location.
Sure. Let's pray. I thank you for this time together and just thank you for our Board of Education and our school system and just give us the wisdom needed to guide and make good decisions this evening. And we also ask that you please wrap your living arms around the family from Gilmer, who lost their child yesterday. And we just look up prayers and our thoughts going to them. So again, I thank you for this time together and just bless us and bless the work we're getting ready to do. Send Christ that we pray. Amen.
And now I would ask Ms. Amy Gibson to lead us in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank our readers from tonight's meeting for your time. Matt Collins, Principal Pickens High School, and Ms. Stephen Hunter, Assistant Principal at Harmony Elementary School. Stephen, we even got you in a tie tonight. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to this agenda?
No, sir, I do not.
There are no amendments. May I have a motion to approve this agenda as presented?
Someone.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
I'll take Ms. Wiggum. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Say it.
Aye.
Five oh. The agenda is approved. Next item is student recognition. We have a very special young lady with us tonight, Ms. Abigail Barber, who was selected to serve on State School Superintendent Richard Woods' 2023-2024 Student Advisory Council. Dr. Thomas, would you like to do the formal introduction?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. So every school year, our State Superintendent of Schools, Richard Woods, has a Student Advisory Council for high school students. This is an application-based process, and selected students will meet with our State Superintendent four times throughout the school year. In these meetings, Mr. Woods seeks input from the student's perspective. This could be anything from policies to just ideas to how to improve our state educational system. This year, I'm pleased to announce that one of our high school students was chosen to serve on this advisory council. Ms. Abigail Barber, a junior at Pickens High participating this year. And I want to add that there were 69 high school students chosen across the state, but there were 1,700 applicants who applied for that position. So we're very proud of Abigail, and I'd like to call her up at this time as we offer her our congratulations. And also, I'd like to call up her principal, Mr. Matt Collins, in the front. Great minds think alike.
Would you like to say anything? I do have a couple pieces of advice. Be yourself when you're there, and don't be bashful. Let them know the way you see things and stand by your obedience. Next item is superintendent reports. I will turn this meeting over now to Dr. Thomas for a brief and factual brief report.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Carter. I'd like to call this time Amy Smith, our Chief Financial Officer. Amy's will give us a finance update.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. There in that room again. There weren't many of them this time. Martha's got our general fund report pulled up for us. So for FY '24 general fund for September of 2023, we've collected 6.75% of our budgeted revenue, and expenditures totaled 18.71% of the approved budget. Mind you that those revenues are a little low right now because we had July and August for property taxes go back into last year as we're required to do by state regulations. Our consolidation of funds. At this point, we're still doing a few approvals. We did get Title I approved, and that is a piece of this consolidation fund, so we haven't quite gotten those transfers. We've gotten most of it signed. We have not gotten all the entries entered yet. So we have the expenditures reflected for the month, but the transfers have not been done. We actually hope to have those done tomorrow. Debt service, of course, we have no debt at this time. Our capital outlay, splash revenue for September was $710,368.46. Interest earned was $1,027.78. Expenditures totaled $268,802.75. And the month-end splash balance was $13,084,051.27. Martha has our collection. As you see, we have been over $700,000 for the past six months. We hope to continue that trend. We are trending higher than we thought we would be at this point, so we're going to keep an eye on this to make sure we don't top that before we're ready to move to the next blast. Our special revenue funds. Go to the first report. Special revenue. Now, this is our school nutrition program, our federal grants. We've collected 3.58% of our budgeted revenue and spent 23.67% of our budgeted expenditures. So we're on target there. Martha, if you'll go to the school activity report. Within 45 days after the end of each quarter, I'm required to present you with the school activity report. This report shows each school. It is their beginning and ending balance for each quarter and the revenue and receipts for each school by quarter. This is all of FY '23. So you had seen the first three quarters. Of course, this is bringing you up to date on April through June and giving you the year end total for those accounts at each school location. Have any questions on that report? And then we have one more report. As I promised, we'll bring back the '23 year-end report. This is in a little different format than you see. This is the state required report. At the end of the year, we are required to send all financial transactions. That's everything. That's fixed assets, depreciation, not just general funds, blast, debt service, special revenue. This is every single financial transaction that we have conducted in this school year. This has already been submitted to the state of Georgia as required and has been accepted. So there is no requirement to have an approval, but we'd like to present this to you just so you have this information. You will see it again when you get your audit report in a little different format, about 50-page format instead of a one-page format. But this is for just for your review. It is included in the area for you to approve. We like to do that just to be transparent and make sure you are aware of those financial transactions. It does include our fund balance, so if you'll take note of it. If you have any questions? If you don't at this time, you can always email me, call me, get in touch with Dr. Thomas or me, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does that reflects, Ms. Smith, that reflects 2.2 under budget?
Yes, actually, I can share. For general fund in particular, we collected 99.52% of our revenue, so that's great. Quite, you know, we don't get 2.5% of the tax funds that go through the county, and that equated last year to about $575,000. So we were short of our goal. We have to include it in our budget, even though we know we're not going to get it. We have to say the full amount, but we were only shy of $252,000. So we really did get a job with collecting those monies, and the county does that for us. They went after some past dues, and we very much appreciate that. So in the expenditure side, we expended 94.38%, so we came in just under $3 million under budget. So that rolls into fund balance, which you can see on our general fund report. Any other questions?
At this time, I would call up Chris Wallace. Mr. Wallace is our Chief Operations Officer for construction and operations update.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, board members. Thanks for having me out this evening. First of all, construction project update, Harmony Elementary Playground. Proud to report that that project has been completed and was very well received and is in use there. Just want to say thank you to the board members, Dr. Thomas, for supporting this initiative and this project. I think we're going to be happy with this for years to come. Was down there this morning early to check on it after we finally did get some rain, about half an inch after a few weeks. So it held up great. Everything was fine, and my understanding is they had recess on the playground today that probably would not have happened three weeks ago, four weeks ago, after a half-inch rain. So really grateful for that, and everyone seems to be really excited, especially my maintenance guys that we always ask to go down and fix it back up after the rain. Washed it out in the past, so grateful for that. The athletics field house that we are in the process of getting the bids on, we have about three maybe weeks left for them to get this bid process wrapped up from the CM, where we'll be able to bring back to you guys the gross maximum price, and that will be presented to you at the November board meeting. So that'll be coming up shortly. The high school renovation project, Beth Thompson and I met with our architects from Bronn Associates and also the mechanical engineers. It involves heating and air, electrical, and the plumbing contractors and engineers. So the preliminary phase of that, I appreciate Beth Thompson being involved in that because a lot of this is going to be focused on her kitchen area. They're part of this first phase of the remodel. And just a reminder, this is phase one of what is a multi-phase remodel because we'll have to do this work over the summer time. So roof, heating and air, kitchen remodel will be the first phase. So that's on schedule, and we'll be looking to get that RFP posted when we get our attorney to get the stamp of approval. As part of the rule, we have to have their approval, and then it'll go public to get that RFP out for us to start that process. Next, I want to skip down in my report to the transportation update. You're going to be seeing something later on this evening involving Tyler Technologies, which is the tablet and GPS system that we've been discussing about putting on our school buses. And I just list a few things out there that that would really help with. It's going to have some benefits, like parent guarding communication options, trip management software and some field trip management specifically. Also, the GPS technology obviously is a big part of this, and the tablets on the bus so that if you have a sub-driver on there, the route's loaded in there. If there's corrections or changes made to a route or students added, and you know, it happens real time. And it's just a great piece of technology. I think it'll make us more efficient. I think it'll make us safer, and I think it'll help us communicate more effectively. So hopefully, we can get that implemented relatively quickly upon the approval and looking forward to the possibilities of what that technology can bring to transportation. So thank you for considering that later on in the consent agenda. Any questions that I can help you answer involving operations?
Mr. Wallace, the tablets, the devices, based on some of my experiences, my experience has been in transportation for about part of the last 30 years, there's lots of resistance to technology. Are they also offering some training from their people?
Yes, sir.
For all those drivers and staff?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's actually a pretty significant piece to the whole project cost is there's clearly outlined training in place, and that's why we want to get going pretty quickly. So we have time to train them and get this going by January would be the hope. And if, you know, we have that opportunity to get the staff trained, the buses or bus drivers monitored, trained, then we could roll that out, have it rolling by January is the hope, get second semester on this, you know, with this program. So a lot of benefits, but yes, there's a significant amount of training just to make sure everybody knows the benefits of it. If, you know, you have a technology and you don't know how to work, it's not really beneficial. But Tyler Technologies, the reminder, is the same company that operates our routing system, Traverse, that we've switched to in the last several months. So it all integrates together, and that's the beauty of them offering these other tools as part of what they do. So Mr. Harris, Transportation Director, has been working with Tyler for about 13 years, and he knows it really well, too. So it's nice to have someone also on staff that knows it well enough that he can go in and help train as well. So yeah, be a lot of training. We'll make sure they're really comfortable with it, make sure they understand what it can do. So there's no fears or no apprehensions about it, and they can also be ready and confident in what we're asking them to do with it. So yeah, great question. Any other questions I can help out with? Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda, this is the second month of having principals discuss their schools. And so tonight, we have Ms. Canyon Petty, Principal of Harmony Elementary with us. And at this time, we'll hear from Ms. Petty, who'll be sharing information regarding her school, the start of the year, and just what they're currently working on at Harmony. So Ms. Petty, take it away.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Thomas and thank you, members of the board, for having me tonight. There's not a lot of opportunity for principals to really talk about our schools, so I'm very excited to really brag about Harmony and brag about the opportunity that I get to go into a school every day, and I have so much joy for what I do. So I just want to thank you guys for that. So Harmony is a fantastic place, first of all, to be and to work, and hopefully after the presentation, you guys will be able to see that. So the first thing I want to talk about is there's a few things, and we'll talk about the structure, the schedule, curriculum instruction, all the good things, some future plans I have. But I do want to start with the one thing that most of us have been talking about when it comes to Harmony, and that is the playground. And I don't think a lot of people realize the issues that we've had with our playground, so I put a few pictures up here because as the new principal and somebody that came from a different school, I didn't really realize the issues we had with the playground. So I wanted to just show a couple of pictures. This is typically what the playground would look like after a rain, and these are some of the issues that we would have. And I know Mr. Wallace kind of knows some of the issues that we would have. And here's some more pictures here, but I mean, it was impossible for the kids to really go out and even play. And this is something the teachers, you know, struggled with trying to get the kids outside. And it's because of what you guys did and the passion you had for, you know, really passing this through and allowing us to have the playground is now we have this beautiful playground that the kids can go to. So if you haven't been out there, anybody, like, please come out and see it. It is fantastic. Like, the first day, the kids were able to go out and look at it. Mr. Wallace and Mr. Parker were there. Like, the kids walked out and were like, "It looks surreal." And they like went out there, they were rolling down the hill. Like, they didn't even play on the equipment. Like, all they did was roll down the hill and do like grass angels. It was fantastic, like, just to see them. So thank you so much for giving them the playground. Like, they still are just, they just want to touch the grass and just roll in the grass. So anyways, thank you so much for giving us this.
I would enjoy playing with them.
It's so funny. All they want to do is roll down the hill, so it's great.
If I were to lay down and roll, I'm not sure I'd be able to get up.
So it's beautiful. It really is beautiful. So thank you. All right, so moving on. I, you know, coming from the high school and the junior high, I really didn't understand the structure and the schedule of the elementary school, and I won't go through everything, but I did want to kind of talk to you guys a little bit because it can inform some of the decisions you make. Kindergarten is really the only grade level where we have teachers teaching all academic subjects at Harmony, and I think it's basically the same way at most elementary schools. I'll let the other elementary principals talk to you when they give their presentations. First through fourth grade, we have ELA teachers. They just teach ELA, reading, writing, things like that. And then we have all of our math teachers. They teach math, social studies, and science. So that's kind of the structure that we have. We have our camp teachers. Our computer teacher focuses on STEM-related subjects, so we do focus on technology, and we try to do a lot of science experiments to supplement our science curriculum. We have art, music, our media center, and then also PE. The first 30 minutes of each day, we dedicate to interventions for students that are behind academically, and that is a whole process in itself. That has been something new that we have done, but it's really helped out tremendously. And then we also provide enrichment. You know, a lot of times, we focus on students that are behind academically, but we also have those students that are above grade level, and they need to be challenged. So we're also providing some enrichment for those students as well. Our benchmarking is complete at this point, so we have a lot of data on our students. And now we're working on really helping the students that need help. Okay, so continuing on, our day is really two major academic blocks. We have ELA and math. ELA is about 120 minutes, and then our math, science, social studies is the same, and then it's broken up with math being 90 minutes, and then science and social studies is 30 minutes. That doesn't really sound like a lot for science and social studies. So what we do is we try to supplement science and social studies in various ways, and we do that through our computer class, which we do STEM activities through computer. We do various math activities that are tied to standards. And then also, our media specialist, I don't know if you know Joe Morgan, but he was our Pickens County Teacher of the Year. He actually takes a lot of his reading. He'll go outside. He does a garden outside with the kids, and he does all kinds of stuff with the kids that supplement our science and even our social studies curriculum. So the kids are getting that extra help and that extra boost that they need for science and social studies because we don't have a lot of time in the day that we really need for the science and social studies curriculum. Also, we have guest speakers for social studies. We had city council come, Kurt Raffield came, talked to our second-grade social studies kids. We have guest speakers coming in all the time to really talk about social study standards. The kids really love when the guest speakers come in, and I have some pictures I'll show you in just a minute. Right now, we have an Olympic competition where the kids are assigned countries, and that has really helped with a lot of the behavior and attendance goals that we're trying to set as an administration. But also, it's tied to some of the social study standards, like math skills, geography, currency, things that they're learning about the country. And they're also having relay competitions in PE, so that has helped with that as well. Art, music, ELA activities are tied to social study standards, so we're really trying to supplement that curriculum to give the kids more time to focus on those standards. All right, so we're talking about curriculum and instruction. I could talk all day about this, but I won't. But as far as curriculum goes, one of the things that the other elementary principals and myself are really working on, along with Carolyn Wilkins, is we're trying to align the curriculum horizontally between all the elementary schools. We have a lot of students that elementary school hop. So they'll go from Hill City to Harmony or Tate to Hill City, and what we want is we want them to do that transition flawlessly. We don't want them to hop elementary schools, but you know, if a family moves, they move within our district. So we want them to be able to move from each school and have access to the same curriculum. So we're working on trying to make that flawless for all of our students, but here are the programs that we use for ELA, math, science, and social studies. So if you have any questions about that, I can answer those questions, but I did want to list that for you so you know what we're using for interventions and all of that. Now, as far as instruction goes, we do a lot of whole group, small group instruction, but we also have a lot of instructional supports in place. We have 49% teachers, what we call 49% teachers, that come in. They help with our students that are behind academically. They will come and provide them extra support during our intervention time. But we also use a hands-on approach. I know that Corey, last board meeting, talked about trying to get the kids away from technology a little bit and only, you know, allowing them like 50% of the time in classes, you know, being in front of a computer. But we try to do the same thing, you know? We want that good balance between technology, but also having them in front of a teacher and pens and paper, using manipulatives because they also need to learn to do things for themselves. We do a lot of project-based learning, direct instruction, but we rely a lot on our paraprofessionals in the lower grades. So I wanted to also provide you with some current data because we have a fantastic academic coach at Harmony, and she's constantly, along with Mr. Hunter and myself, really monitoring this data. But with our students who started the school year, we actually saw an increase. Now, a lot of times, we worry about summer slide in really any school, but especially elementary school. But we had our students start the school year actually a little bit higher than they ended the school year as far as their reading level, okay? Which was good news for us. Now, math, we saw a little bit of a summer slide with them, but being able to benchmark was very important for us so we could see kind of where we were starting with the students this year. Discipline data, Mr. Hunter loves this just because he does the discipline all the time. But discipline is actually doing well as far as our students because one of the things I wanted to do when I came into the school is I wanted to work on the climate and the culture of the school. I wanted our teachers to treat our students like their own children, like you are going to be an adult that they trust. We want to make sure that all the kids feel like they're a family and they can come to school and we're another family. So we're trying to build this positive culture for our students. And I feel like it's working. Our kids know they're loved and they're cared about, and I think that it really has some sort of impact on what we're seeing with our discipline data right now. Moving forward, I did want to talk just a minute about our milestone scores from last year. That's something else as an administrator I have to monitor. I will say with our third graders last year, who are now fourth graders, have made significant progress, so I did want to point that out. You know, on our school improvement plan, we always have a standard, we want to increase by 3% on the Georgia milestone of student scoring proficient or distinguished. Last year, our third graders on English Language Arts increased by 19%, and in math, they increased by 14%. So to me, that is significant. And I hope to see, now again, our school improvement plan has the 3%, but we continue to want to push these kids. Like, this is good. Now, our fourth graders, who are now fifth graders, didn't do as well. They decreased. But, you know, it's not really apples to apples here, it's apples to oranges, but hopefully these third graders that are now fourth graders will continue to increase is what we're hoping. Now, if we're looking at CCRPI, when we take both of those grade levels, we average them together, we did have an increase in both areas, a 4% and a 5%. Okay? All right, so now the fun stuff, okay? So now I get to brag a little bit. So going, talking about discipline referrals, I've talked to them a little bit, but there's the exact numbers. You can read through that. I won't go over that. But we're talking about everything cut in half from October of last year to October of this year. Everything's been basically cut in half, and I attribute that to my teachers. I attribute that to my staff members. I attribute that to the way they talk to our children. They're doing a fantastic job, and I feel like our kids really feel it, too. Title I Curriculum Night was a success. I had all of our teachers basically tell me that the gym was as full as it's ever been, if not more, but I had our students create the video. I wanted our students to be a part of it, and I think that that helped tremendously. Almost all of our teachers are growing readers trained, which is a two-year cohort. It's administered by the governor's office. We have several teachers attending letters training, so this is a focus on the science behind learning to read. So I have teachers that are seeking that professional development, and I'm very proud of that. Music makers sing the National Anthem at the Road Braves game. Ms. Panazopoulos does a fantastic job trying to get the kids involved in something, and that's the one thing I feel I have the benefit. I used to think me being a high school and a junior high teacher and administrator was something to my detriment, but now I'm starting to see it's a benefit because I can see that having these students at the older grades and seeing these pods of students that don't have something and they're not involved in something, what it leads to. So that's what I'm really working with my teachers on. We've got to get them involved in something when they're young, and Ms. Panazopoulos is a very big part of that. Our Olympic incentive, I talked about that a minute ago, but what Mr. Hunter and I are really doing is we're tying that to attendance behavior. Kids earn points for their class country by being in school, by having good behavior, by winning these contests and awards. If they're a Harmony hero, if they're a soaring eagle. We're promoting multicultural awareness. We have all kinds of activities that they can participate in, and they're really welcoming, like, they really like it and they enjoy it. So I think that this is something that we'll probably keep around. Other things that we're doing, and I tried to include pictures, and there's Mr. Gartrill. He's reading. We read Wednesday, but this is something that everybody's kind of getting in on, but the kids really enjoy us reading to them. The leadership team started this, but now we have community volunteers that are reaching out, asking if they can come read. We have students, we have a token economy. That's how we reward our students for things, but they turn in their talent tokens so they can read to classes. So we have students that want to go read to classes now because they see it modeled by adults, which is fantastic. We have what we call a woo-woo wagon. So on paydays, the leadership team and myself, we're swag. All right, woo-woo, we go woo-woo, and we go to the teachers' classrooms and we take them treats. All right, woo-woo. We go woo-woo. And we go to the teachers' classrooms and we take them treats and little snacks. And the kids get excited because they hear us like woo-woo, like we celebrate new teachers and they get all excited. And there's a picture of Wox and I acting ridiculous in a classroom. But the kids get excited and the teachers do. We also have teachers that are volunteering to go do peer observations as part of their professional learning. And that has actually taken off, that was Mr. Hunter's idea, and they want to go learn from each other, which is fantastic. And I do a thing called Google Meets in the morning for morning announcements. So instead of being on the announcements, I actually do a video so the kids can see me. And kids can pay their talent tokens to be a guest host. And this is a kindergartner, Mr. Lang Ray. He decided he wanted to do morning announcements and we were going to do it as Spider-Man. So he's doing a Spider-Man mask and we did morning announcements that way. And then he did a floss dance afterwards. So that was Mr. Lang. He is a crazy character for us. And then we also do contests to promote a positive culture. And there's some of the contests that we did. All right. So some future plans. I'm almost finished. I do want to have an agricultural program. I worked with Todd Dogson over at the junior high school and we started the poultry science program at the junior high school. I saw the impact that students love ag in this community. And we have it at Hill City. I love what Angie's doing over at Hill City with her ag program with Sony Chapman. We need it as other schools. So I definitely want to look at that. My five-year plan is to have Harmony be a STEAM Academy, STEM or STEAM Academy. I've looked into that. I feel like we have a great foundation at Harmony to do that. And I think it's doable. That's something I would like to look into. So I want to continue to grow my teacher leaders. I have so many teachers that take these committees and run with them. We have several committees at Harmony and they do a fantastic job. And I want to increase parent engagement. We're slowly doing that. I've gone from having two PTO members to now I have nine officers and probably about thirty members. So I'm getting there. I'm getting there. All right. And then I think now, I was told I had five to seven minutes, but I have Wallace's syndrome. I like to talk, so. So I'm gonna stop now. Right there, bud. Okay. If, um, if you guys have any questions, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Finley, if members of the community, and this is going to be on video, if members of the community would like to contact and schedule to come read on the Wednesday, the program you do, how, how would that go about?
All they have to do, they can call the school or they can email me, like either way. And I can schedule them and get them in to read to a class. Like it is, it is easy. Like wasn't, we have a schedule, don't we? We have a schedule. And we have all the classes set up and sometimes like Destiny's even drops by and she's like, hey, can I read today? And I'm like, yeah, we'll plug you in, you know? So it's easy as that. So yes, they can email me or call the school. Any other questions?
Can you get with Dr. Thomas at some point today and explain to him how to get the board a woo-woo wagon?
Yes.
I feel somewhat slight.
You can borrow mine.
We have a dragon wagon.
Yeah. We have a dragon wagon. Okay, see, if we were driving, we'd do a dragon wagon.
So if you could just do that for us, that'd be great.
Gotcha, Amy. Okay, everybody else.
It's a great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say thank you. That was awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
Put together a plan for, and agriculture, I think I've picked this up for them. When you get your plans together, we look forward to looking at them and trying to build wherever we can fit it. And thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Finley, thank you again. Thank you for your leadership at Harmony and for sharing that information on your school. At this time, Chairman Gartrill, I do have a few comments I'd like to make, just some data that has been recently received from our school district by, from the State Department. We do have our SAT data that's come out recently and for the class of 2023, that's last year's graduating class. We outperformed both the state and the national average. So we're really proud of that for our kids and our teachers there. We also had our graduation rate data that was released this week and we're five percent higher than the state average. So again, really happy about that as well. Remember, it's our aspiration to have our graduates either enrolled in lists or employees, once they get that diploma from Pigment High School. And then speaking of ag, we did have a visit from the Georgia Department of Education recently, the Hill City and PJ. The DOE crew was filming ag education classrooms at both locations as well as interviewing students in those classes. And the purpose of this visit, our state was gathering information to present to the governor's office about CTAE, the Career Technical and Agricultural Education in Georgia classroom. So very excited that Hill City and Pigment Junior High School were chosen. And I think the video was released today. So I'll, I'll share that with y'all when I get out, look at it first, okay? And then lastly, I do want to say that this is National Principals Month, October is, and we had everybody here today, all six of our principals. That job is hard. It is challenging because you're leading both students and serving both students and adults in the building. But I'm very proud of who we have leading our schools, all six of them. And.
And good luck.
We do certainly appreciate their leadership and, and we appreciate the courage and the grace they display when they lead their schools. So thank you, our principals. And then lastly, just some upcoming dates. We do have a work session scheduled for November the third. We have a teacher work day, a professional learning day on election day. That's November the seventh. There'll be no students in, in schools that day. And our regular board meeting will be held on November the ninth. Thank you, Chairman.
After that wonderful information and presentation, that's hard to follow. So we'll just go pretty quickly through the rest of the day. First action item is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
Salute.
Mr. Wiggington. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Ladd. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. The next item is request for approval of strategic plan for Pigment County School System. Before I go any further, Dr. Thomas, would you like to tell us just a little bit about the strategic plan?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'll be happy to. This is a five-year plan. And the last five-year plan was from 2018 to 2023. And so it was time for us to revisit our five-year plan. This was a process that began last February with board training. And then there was a, some collaboration on the part of our school board association, as well as our district office, to start, to begin the process where there was a community survey that helped, that helped lead the direction of the new plan. There was two meetings in the spring, one in the May, where we involved several parents, several students, several community members, business leaders, as well as district office personnel. And they looked at the data from the survey, looked at the data from our student achievement, and began to formulate goal areas and objectives, as well as review the mission and vision of our school system. The second meeting happened in early, early June. That was for internal stakeholders. We're, we're looking at the work that had been done in May. And then from that meeting, the work began to be refined, we reviewed, we edited it. And then the document is, is here today. We discussed that last Friday in the work session. It, it is a collaborative process. It is not just our school system, but also our parents, our students, our community members that devised this plan. And my recommendation is that our plan be formally approved tonight by our board. So we can, it will last through 2028, the next five years.
It's a, I'll go ahead and make my comment. Before I go any further, it's very substantive plan. Probably one of the most substantive and most well-connected to the things that our administrators and teachers do daily. Than any plan that I've seen while I've been on the board. Very proud of it. And with that in mind, may I have a motion to approve the strategic plan for the next five years?
Seven.
Ms. Gibson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Ladd. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand and or say aye.
Aye.
Five oh, our district, our district has approved the strategic plan for the next five years. The next item is the consent agenda. It includes the approval of financial reports, the approval of overnight field trip for the Pigment High Band and Chorus, minutes from the September fourteenth called budget meeting and hearing, and the September fourteenth regular board meeting, approval of the number of surplus buses, and approval of using the Tyler Technology Bus GPS and communication system. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Salute.
Mr. Wiggington. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Gibson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. The consent agenda passes. Dr. Thomas, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
No, sir, we have not.
Any public participation? Next item is board comments. Anybody on the board like to make comments?
I have a comment, but I always do, so that's not a surprise. I've been watching the videos of the principals talking about themselves and I think it's very informative. Mr. Kretschmeyer, I have not seen yours yet. I saw it hit today. I'm going to get to it. Mr. Combs, always energetically entertaining. Love it, love it. But imagine my surprise as I was watching Mr. Stevens at, from Tate Elementary. And he said, hey, tell us something about us, something about yourself that you, that we don't know. And he's, well, I race dirt bikes or on the weekends or motorcycles, which isn't Mr. Stevens, dirt bikes. And I scared my dog. It's a doof. What? You know, oh, let me rewind that. Okay, so that's pretty cool. So you need to check those out because it's some pretty nifty information in there.
That's great.
Anybody else? Ms. Finley?
Yeah, no, nothing right yet.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. We've tried to be fairly brief. I want to wish everybody a good weekend. That's where we're playing our travels tomorrow night. I want to say go grab it, get those bobcats. And I'd like to thank all our faculty and staff for your continued hard work and dedication. God bless you all. At this time, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, we are adjourned at six forty-four.